Yeah, let's call this meeting to order. We stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the Fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Take your time.
Okay. Okay, I think we're good.
Okay, I think we're going to start our meeting out with acknowledgements.
Yes, so you may recall that a few weeks ago, we had Anya Dangare here, and she had won at the time, the Tallent Fire Poster Contest. So she was, you know, we were fascinated by everything, and it was this poster here that she had submitted. And so I did get a call just last week that we are to honor her again, that we have actually won even more, can you believe that? Even more! So not only did you win Tallent, you won Tallent County, and so Tallent County comes with $150. Then, Anya, you won the state of Connecticut, which comes with $750. Isn't this a bit like a game show or something? You won $500 for your school. So you have nine, like $900 for you and 500 for the school. Is that the coolest thing ever? Congratulations! Do you want to tell us who's ready tonight? Nice. I'm sure you're very proud, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we have Mr. Rock, he is the Fire Marshal here today to present to us something very special. Yes.
This will be, your original will be hung in the state cap. It will also be a cover of the fire prevention. In every school in Connecticut. If anybody knows how difficult it is to get to that. This starts in August with our state, with our community fire marshals, right? We get together, we formulate a plan to get to the schools, to give them the information they need, the outline to start the poster program in October. Of course, October is Fire Prevention, so it's a big deal. Want to ensure that everybody's fire safe, prepared with their smoke detectors, right? Stop, stop, and roll, I think you talked about. Talked about an escape plan, and so on and so forth. It's all about fire prevention, you know, fire safety every day. So that goes on in October. By December, we have to apply to the county. Our winner gets going to the state. So hands down, our winner came to town, I knew it before we even went to the state. So when I went to the state, it took a while. And it was frustrating because I didn't hear anything, nobody heard anything. Typically, the secrets get out. We didn't hear anything until I called Dr. Willet. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good job.
Hooray!
This will be hung in the school. In your school, for every student that walks by knows that they have a star amongst them.
Dr. Willet, would you want to? Yes.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
You're going to start expecting.
Thank you. So exciting. Thank you for coming. And your artwork is so inspiring. Thank you. All right, so next we could move on to the approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
Sorry.
I move to approve the agenda.
Maybe we could just all in favor say aye. Anyone say aye? Anyone abstain? Okay, so the agenda is approved. How about the approval of the March 23rd, 2022 minutes? Yes. I have, I was not listed as being there or not, I was not there. So you can include me on the action. Thank you. Twenty, yeah, March 23rd, 2022 minutes?
Tony, move to March 23rd, 2022 minutes with corrections.
Second. All in favor say aye. Aye, aye. Anyone abstain or say aye?
I wasn't there.
Oh, okay. Okay, so Jacob is abstaining. Okay, let's move on to public participation. Oh, yes. No, don't be sorry.
Do not want to remove her.
Okay. Are we ready to go?
Ready to go.
Okay. The members of the Tallent Board of Education welcome members of the public to share their thoughts and ideas at this time. When appropriate to do so, members of the board and the administration may respond to comments during points of information. However, in consideration of those in attendance and in effort to proceed in a timely manner, follow-up discussion may need to take place outside of the meeting setting. I don't think we normally read that. Okay, we can start out with Reenie.
Hi, thank you. Reenie Beesaw, 230 Grant Hill Road, Tallent. I just wanted to clarify, there's been a little bit of unclarity, lack of clarity on the enrollment for the budget coming up. So Dr. Willet had sent me the chart that's in the Board of the Budget Book. It shows a total enrollment decline of 55 students for this upcoming budget. Other people have said that Dr. Willet has said that enrollment is increasing. I believe what he means is the incoming class has more than we've seen before, but I just want to have a very clear yes or no. It seems as though the budget is based on a reduction of 55 students for this upcoming year. Yes or no? I don't want to make it a big deal, but I just want it on the record because it's been a point of contention a bit. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much. Kate Howard Bender?
Hi, everybody. Kate Howard Bender, 103 Goose Lane. Just wanted to thank everybody for their continued work to make sure that all of the needs of our students and our community are met. I think that, just to kind of counter what Ms. Beesaw was saying, to say that an entire, you know, $41 million budget, I don't know the number off the top of my head, is based on 55 students is really reductive and insulting to the work that you all have done. So thank you for supporting our community, and thank you for doing the right thing by our kids and by all Tallent. Be well, everybody.
Thank you so much. Would anyone else like to say anything, any points of information? I don't see any more hand. And our audience is sparse. All right, so I will move on to the student representatives' report.
Of course.
Oh, I'm so sorry, correspondence, I'm totally jumping in.
Jacob. So I'll do correspondence. Just for the minutes, this is for two meetings worth of correspondence because we didn't have one last time, it wasn't there. But it's short. So we had email, it was sent actually in February, but not received immediately due to a software error regarding the request. We had several emails sent by the same author regarding budget documents, also sent in late February, but not received immediately due to the software error. We had an email asking when the last day of school will be, an email regarding educational decisions for a particular student, and an email regarding clean school bus funding and switching to an all-electric school bus. That's it.
Hey, thank you so much. Now we can move on to points of information.
Yeah.
I just wanted to kind of reply to what Ms. Beesaw and Ms. Howard Bender were saying. Personally, I'm not insulted at all. I think the question was not that we should be reducing our budget because enrollment went down. I think it was really just a clarification that there seems to be this narrative out there that enrollment is increasing. When I think what Dr. Willet has said in the past is that compared to those lean classes, if you will, like second, third, fourth, and fifth, enrollment is definitely going up compared to those years. Hence, the, I believe kindergarten was projected at 186 or something. So I believe that's what Ms. Beesaw is kind of referring to, this kind of confusing narrative that, yes, enrollment might be increasing for next year's kindergarten compared to, say, what's currently in third grade, but overall, yes, enrollment is expected to decrease overall for the next couple of years. So, but again, I don't think anybody is saying that because of that, the budget that we put forth is not appropriate. So I just kind of wanted to clarify that from my perspective. Thank you.
Tell me or Dr. Willet?
Different topic we're saying. I can go on and on. I promise to switch about that. So just a quick kind of point of where information is and then clarifying. You can find budget information on the site at the budget link. And then the budget link has documents, and the documents there is a enrollment report. See, enrollment report kind of gives you more of the broad picture of the situation so that the truth, the answers both are true, right? So these aren't mutually exclusive things. Right now, if you look at it, it's 2260, it's actually more like 2262. We projected at the beginning 2241. So we're higher than what was projected, and most of the time we're hitting higher projections. And so what I've said, said when I've talked about this is that over time, you can see that we are no longer really, you know, if you look at a span of, say, even five years here, you'll notice that this doesn't go below the 21, you know, six, it's hard for me to see that. Hopefully at home you can see it, 2160 or so. You're not going below that now. What's starting to happen is our projections and projections from NASDAQ are showing that you, you know, you're making kind of modest decreases over the next couple of years, but then you bump back up. And so the other piece of it is that it typically projects much lower than we are. So I think years ago, they projected it to be at 2217 right now. And it's 2262 right now, I think as of a few days ago. So a lot of times, you know, what you see there, we're probably not going, you know, to 2205 next year. More realistically, if we are dipping, it's probably within a span of, I don't know, 20 or so. Usually, that, that next year, we put it that way because that's how it was projected, but, and running with the projection numbers, but it usually will be higher than what it's showing there. So it is going down, it'll probably be higher than what's showing there, but those are conservative. And then where you see the, you know, where we're talking about, so that's the truth about that, does go down a bit, but then it starts coming back up. And there's the projections that come for the next 10 years, which is what we get. Each year we do this, show that now it's increasing. So it's projected to increase. And even though you are going to dip down a bit, you're not dipping down substantially. That's the thing. In the next five years, you're bouncing around this 2100 level. So juxtaposed to, say, many, many years in the past where, you know, there were these declines deeply over the span of years, you've reached a kind of threshold, a plateau here. Your 2100 is voucher plateau. So it's not, it's not projected to go lower than that 2160, and it's projected, and is, as you can see there, it's projected in the short term to start to go down and then rise back up. And then over the next 10 years, rise, rise up. And again, you'll never get to like 3000 or something, but you're rising back up again. And let me see if I can blow that up a little bit here. It's not, this isn't, Zoom is never ideal for this, but this is posted on the website. And so you can see that how these are projected. They come to a sort of plateau, and then they start to come back up again. And so the graphs, you know, kind of show visual depiction of it. So both are true. You're dipping down a bit, you're hitting a plateau, and then you're rising again. So when you're budget planning, you know, you just have to keep in mind that you're threatening, you're hitting pretty much that threshold in these five years, and you're going up. So you'll not go up, in my mind, in the, you know, in 10 years, you're not going up to 3000, but you're rising again. And you're rising in particular first in the pre-K5, and then of course that kind of flows up. So that's the, that's the whole comprehensive picture. And that document will show that, more or less.
Does anyone have any more discussion relating to enrollment?
Well, it's a common Ms. Beesaw conversation in previous years. One of the things that, you know, I always say is that, you know, budget season is year long. And while we're certainly, you know, I know we've got the town council presentation coming up, we've got the referendum coming up, or we're doing everything we can to get this one behind us. I feel like it's time and that we're going to start preparing for next year. You know, we're going to start, we've got the opportunity that we probably haven't had in the past couple of years to really start digging into the data before it's budget season. And I'm talking things like, you know, some of the maintenance conversations and the facility upkeeps that go into those budget numbers. I'm excited to learn more as we get into like the bus contracts and the metrics we use to feed there, living up to the contract requirements. So that when we enter next year's negotiations, we're not all of a sudden trying to drink from the fires. Dr. Willet, you know, explains what the district needs because we've seen it, we've helped guide it. We've stepped up and done more of the leadership. And that's for various reasons we haven't been able to do. So I'm excited to hear some of the questions that, like Reenie's brought up. I'm excited to hear Ms. Howard Bender's assessment, you know, on that. I sincerely hope those questions don't stop. Let's keep talking, let's keep digging in. I know Dr. Willet's talked about doing some of the, forgive me, I'm going to get the term wrong, but the rounds.
Instructional.
Instructional round.
Yeah.
Which were amazingly educational last time we did them. I'm looking forward to getting out there and having some of those conversations in the curriculum. You guys are kind of poking in as far as the student achievement, achievement, and how that relates to the dollars that we're spending. Getting back to what we're actually trying to do so we can use that to make these conversations more fruitful. Something I think we're already doing now.
Definitely makes sense now that hopefully COVID is taking a little bit more of a backseat, and we can have the time to talk about these things. Yeah.
They've been about, has for this to be added to the agenda. I don't think it needs to, it's just something I wanted to bring back to the leadership. But in regards to the superintendent's evaluation, I would like to kind of go back to the document a little bit and discuss adding in some dates when votes need to be taken. Also, maybe discussing maybe lengthening the time that we have to feedback. Short. And then one other thing that was brought up that I think is worth discussing a little bit is having an executive session, or at least part of an executive session that the board can meet without Dr. Willet to talk a little bit about things. And to be clear, on the record to show this, I'm not, this isn't an anti-Dr. Willet thing. I just know that in a lot of interviews, you know, when we hire staff, time to talk amongst ourselves, and I think that's a very useful thing. So you might, this is something that the process. But I just wanted to. The way the schedule is, it might be well within the superintendent evaluation process before we can sit down and the leadership team and talk about it.
I think you're correct. How do you propose? Effectuating this idea? Do you think, Ash, you know, you, myself, and Ashley, should we get talking about it?
I think it depends kind of with the timeline. I think, and Tony could correct me if I'm wrong, but technically the statutes board agrees with the superintendent's method of value superintendent, which is wonderfully vague.
Yeah.
But we may want to at least kind of get a couple specifics and then bounce it back to the board. I'm not entirely sure, but maybe you and I can.
I mean, most of that's already been negotiated between the chairs.
Yeah.
So, I mean, you can modify some other stuff, but you're, you're, you know, whether you go into executive session or not, like, it's your decision. All the rest of it has been negotiated already. But, but if the board, you know, I can always try to help in any way. You know, posting stuff ahead of time or things. But the piece of executive session and whether you invite them to it or not is that the, that's the board's.
Decision.
Decision.
Yeah. Well, you had mentioned a few things. So you said iron out dates, you had a little list. So the dates are all ironed out, right, Dr. Willet?
Yeah, that's the part that we've negotiated, and all that other stuff is already kind of set. But, but again, like, you know, if you feel like you need a little more time on documents, I can try to provide the documents more ahead, you know? It's just, there's a lot to generate there. So you have about five or six days, or seven, six or seven days or whatever to look at. It's pushed back, and had, this whole thing has been pushed back already.
Yeah.
The thing is, we've got to hit this timeline too, because generally, that document's supposed to come to me by a certain date, and then, you know, so there's steps that have to look. Okay.
Well, one idea you had was adding an extra week to put in our thoughts.
Yeah, yeah, just.
Would that push it back? That would push it.
Yeah, I mean, it's just when I present it, I think there's five or seven days for the board then to, to, you know, kind of submit their thoughts to that form, and that form is basically handed over to you guys. I don't see that. So at that point, you review all the artifacts. Everything is supposed to be kind of considered in the scope of whatever the president has presented artifacts are. So we have that, I present the artifacts and do a presentation. Then the board walks away for, I think it's like five or seven days. I can call it up now. And they kind of look at it, submit their thoughts to, you know, to you guys. And then ultimately, you start to work with that. But it's, right now it's five to seven days. I mean, I can try to release them prior, but the presentation is the part of.
Yeah, it's part of it. Okay. I love Christine.
I think if you want, if you could pull it up, Dr. Willet, because I think it's five, we get five days. And then you and Ashley get three weeks. So my thought would be, maybe you could give us a little bit of your time. Because then I don't think it goes back to Dr. Willet until you and Ashley have gotten your three weeks. That would be my personal suggestion. And my other thought would be if, if we're going to talk about, if we can do something with the executive session, I would like to, and I don't think this is possible, I would like to have a discussion or be able to see what every board member has input. Like, that's not something that the entire board sees, only you and Ashley do. I'm not sure if that's something that we might be able to see, what, what every board member's saying. I think that would be really helpful in coming to a consensus of the best, you know, way to, Dr. Willet, is the valuation, if we can kind of hear what everybody's thinking.
But when we're in executive session, don't we hear what everybody's thinking anyway?
We don't get to see everybody's Google Doc.
Yeah.
It's just whatever anybody says. So I guess, yeah, I guess then we could all kind of reiterate our Google Doc. We could just do it that way. But again, I kind of like Jacob's idea, and again, no offense to Dr. Willet, but I think it would be kind of nice to have a small period of time within that May 25th executive session where maybe the board could have some discussions without Dr. Willet.
I'm definitely happy to discuss these with Ashley, these ideas.
And it's a clarification for my purpose. When I was looking at the, the flow, the schedule, after we submit our thoughts on the Google Docs, and then you guys come, so the leadership team takes it back and does that, that you do. There's, you bring it back, and it says something when we come to, it's presented to the board. Is that just a presentation, or does the board as a whole then have to approve it? There's also a second point later after the negotiations for compensation.
Now, the way it's negotiated is your chairs, right? And your chairs take into consideration, but I negotiated your chairs. So they write it. And then at the end of that, when you come out of the executive session, you know, you can think, let's go back and look at it, but the process wise, there may be, you don't have to all sign. But give me a minute, and I'll look at that. Like, so, I just, everybody's running a little slower.
And I guess that same question would apply to after the compensation conversation. After that's negotiated with the leadership team, there's another point where you bring that back to the board.
You do.
Does that have to be approved by the board again, or is it?
No, I think you do vote on that. Yeah.
I recall voting on that last year.
Yeah, you vote on that, but the F out is written by the chairs.
I recall the year before discussing it with the whole board.
Well, in the very, in the distant past, really, we do discuss it in the meeting.
With the actual, like.
We all get in there and we talk about it.
Okay.
We don't, we do that executive session. And what happens is when I come back, basically, I haven't seen, you know, they presented to me. Basically, I haven't seen, you know, they presented to, to me and then I, we all talk about it. You know, if there's questions, if there's any follow-ups, if there's any of that, and after that second meeting, it's finalized. So it's like, uh, it's like a final presentation of it to me and then we talk about it and it's just, you know, the, anyone has those follow-up questions, they ask them or I answer them. And then the chairs finish it and that gets given to me and then I can respond by some data if I wish to. But that's, that's been shares, right, and that's how we've done it in past practice all the way. But yeah, um, but the last part, you have to approve. The, um, the contract changes, remember?
Well, I'm definitely happy to talk to Ashley about these ideas, thank you. Was there any other points of information? Nope, okay, then we could move on to the student representatives report.
Emily and. Emily, so, uh, this week is, well, this week. And we have like four different types of raffle baskets and things for that, so people are donating to win a raffle basket. And then we have a speaker coming tomorrow to talk about, uh, wellness. And then next week is break and the week after we have spirit week. And then also, I think it was like two weekends ago, we had twelve of our chamber choir singers go to New York and sing at Carnegie Hall.
How do you guys feel going into your very final quarter? Nervous, excited, it's all kind of coming to a. Well, enjoy it. It will be graduation before you know it. I was also gonna ask, how ready are you for a break? Well, thank you so much, does anybody have anything else they'd like to ask or share with our student representatives?
No, but good luck to, um, I know Tullam High School Deck is going to their international competition very soon. So my, uh, my, uh, my people were, good luck to them, all of them, um, very talented, very, very smart. Where are they going? I think this year's, oh, I wanna say Anaheim, but I could be wrong, could be. If it's, it's between Anaheim, Orlando, Atlanta. Very far and very. Good luck. And thank you.
Hey, Dr. Willis, are you ready to give us the superintendent's report?
Too much fun with the tech tonight, I gotta say.
We're not paying attention.
We're gonna use this. Alright, so, uh, the first one is, uh, as we always do in the first meeting of each spot, the financial report. Business manager, it comes with a lovely narrative, um, and then it's also followed by, uh, for everyone at home. Scrolling to the, yeah, very detailed, but also hard to see one pager that gives you. So that is in the agenda posted and it's, it's here too. So just, I'm gonna put the little camera on the financial report and I'll read you, not verbatim the financial report, but I'm just gonna read some of the highlights. So, um, those of you at home will see his narrative. Salaries code one ten are currently under budget by about one oh six. Transferring the associate educator salaries, um, that should take that. Kind of balance it out, so the one twenty, code one twenty, available balance is a hundred and twenty K with three months remaining. Overtime expenses, one thirty cannot typically be encumbered and they're under budget by forty-three. Stipends, one fifty are currently over by. Sixty-two thousand, I believe, and in prior years, all budgeted stipends. You know, encumbered pay-to-play funds are collected, that type of thing, so there's always a little bit of catch-up. Um, and that's, that's a place we expect to kind of be at this time. Health insurance severance, employee benefits, code two ten, uh, well, two, one ninety, two hundred to ten. Are collectively two hundred and three under, teachers have not been forward this year to announce the retirements as much as we thought they would. And so severance has favorable benefits, things like that. Well, and severance has the typical about newly hired employees, retired employees. Code two twenty, these and others who have retired since the beginning, you know, there haven't been a tremendous number of those, so. We do have the available balance of sixty-one. Retirement and unemployment, um, two fifty, twenty-fourty, two fifty, two sixty. And enforcement, reimbursement are collectively seventy-eight under budget. Benefit consultants and workers comp balances, two seventy through ten are both under budget of about nineteen thousand. As you can see that on a lot of those, the under budget lines are pretty small comparatively, like nineteen thousand, seventy-eight thousand, et cetera. What's not small at all are the special education, um, allocations because, you know, we, we've had a. You know, COVID has created a tough year and so there are some adjustments there. And so that's causing the budget to come, you know, down quite a lot. Code three twenty professional ed services, uh, two, two hundred and twenty-two, um, available legal. Sorry, over budget by two hundred and twenty-two, I mean, that's for special education, OTPT, ideological, psychological, behavioral consultations. Legal audit and tax service, which is three forty, three fifty, uh, collectively under by fourteen K. Again, that's not a tremendous amount, so we do expect, you know, we do have a couple more months here. We'll see that probably come in closer to zero. All repair maintenance, custodial cleaning, equipment and technical expenses for twenty-four thirty will continue to be spent. As the year goes along, uh, lines are currently under by about eighty-eight, many of them. Custodial expenses are cyclical and they do rough here, some expenses have increased a little bit. BGP sets things that. Transportation, uh, by ten remains over budget for March by two hundred and seventeen thousand. Even after the excess cost was applied, most interest or routes have been created, as you know, and we follow them. We also have, um, other special education routes, the Haven Transportation. And they generally work with our students of special ed. The overage is generated as a result of adding special education routes. The overage was reduced when excess cost came in, but you'll notice we're still saying it's negative there. Special ed tuitions are currently over by four hundred and forty thousand. Available balance continues to change as we go on, it's actually going to continue to change in a not favorable direction. We've had a number of other things come up this month, so, um, we're gonna have, we're gonna expect to see that. Month. Energy expenses, as you know, we're transferring textbooks, have not, you know, they're in that process, spending the rest of that. So that twenty-seven thousand. Instruction supplies, equipment miscellaneous, general supplies, six hundred, six-ten. Six ninety, seven thirty are collectively under by about a hundred thirty-three, um, but we are still expanding as we go through. Really, what's gonna be happening this year. For us is. You know, we've had many wonderful things occur, um, coronavirus relief fund was a great benefit to the districts. It was a great thing to have council did for it. But where we're really getting hit, special ed and special ed transport, and where we do have some positive balance left over, they're not high balances in many of these cases. So we're currently at eighty-three thousand to the plus in the green, so to speak. But. But, you know, we have these continuing large expenses that are coming. And I anticipate us coming in very close to the line in this year. I don't anticipate us going under, you know, going over, but I, we are gonna be very close to the line. Given even the conversations I had the last week, it's, is just, it's not just this district, it's all districts, but. It has left us with a lot of things that are occurring that we have to, you know, address and. Special ed is, is really, uh, going to, uh, the thing we're gonna have to work out as we get to the end of the year. The next excess cost payment is gonna bring us back up, but it's not as big as the first one. And, uh, you know, so that's, that's where I see us at, I guess, is very close to the line.
Do you know what the excess cost? Might be? The second one?
Yeah. Two hundred thousand. And that's a very rough guess, it's usually of the amount we get, we never get a hundred percent. We get about seventy-eight percent, about seventy-five percent of that seventy-eight is in February, about twenty-five of that seventy-eight percent.
And I'm just, lastly, do you, um, so do you anticipate kind of putting a spending freeze on some, any of these accounts that?
I do.
We can?
Yeah.
You know, I hate to say.
Letting us kind of get to the end of it, yes, I do.
Okay.
I, I totally expect to do that, because we need to see where, lock everything down, see where we are. I think, you know, there's some things to tie up in April, we have to break and come back, but I do think we're gonna do that.
I know I have it on, on my future FXC, but I'm, I'm wondering also if we have to perhaps. Dip into, um, the, uh, the ERF. We can do that right in, like, April or May if we needed to, if we were in like a kind of an emergency.
If we make the request and they transfer it, we can do that in June, and, you know, and so, yes, and that's why the ERF has been, is there. And we have that five hundred thousand in there, so if we get too close to that line, we would then request that transfer from the ERF. And there is a special education provision in there.
Thank you.
Just a question on some of the verbiage that, well, I used, I know you said that. Some of the costs that we're seeing, you know, especially, especially, you know, related to the COVID experience as well. But in the narrative there, it says that there's, we're seeing increased occurrence, occurrences of special ed accountabilities earlier in the year. Or why the earlier?
Well, um, that means that translation is that, um, changes to special ed programs and outplacements. That usually would not come until people have fully had, you know, the process, um, you know, PPTs are at the end of the year. These things are coming up now, people are saying, I'm not waiting to add that one. This, you know, let's do the thing now, assume it now, or we are getting people in, you know, from other districts now, it has to happen. Now, where, there, sometimes you see it coming at the end of the year. This, it's hit, it's another way of saying it hit us way earlier. And we were hoping that it would hit us and that was just a wave, but it hit us, there's a wave and this wave is continuing, yeah, hello.
Anyone else, questions? The monthly financial report? Okay.
Yep, just gonna scroll down. My eyes are always bugging out towards Christine, it's not you, Christine, I'm trying to read that. Okay, so real quick, we, um, this item is just to bring the board's attention to, uh, you know, the, there's a process that we try to do annually. You know, everything to get disrupted. In this process, uh, Board of Ed full setting, I mean, it's time to do it again. So, um, Board will engage on May twenty-fourth, May twenty-eighth and July sixth, July twenty-sixth. So people can put that in their calendars, these are Board of Ed meetings that will dedicate a chunk to, if not a good chunk, to, um. To doing Board of Ed goals. Mr. Crusoe will be joining us for that, uh, for cave, which is who guided the process last time. And, um, and this document was provided during that process, it's also available for the board. Anyone else who wants, I think I posted it up in a couple places. This is generally Board of Ed goals, district traditional goals, portrait of a graduate, teacher goals, and then applying flexibilities. This was provided back in December, uh, in the December meeting, and so it's also posted on the dashboard. And you can see what the Board of Ed schools currently are, they're listed on every, um, agenda as well. You can see what a traditional goal looks like in our school system that was done for many years and, you know. COVID with the flexibilities plan that the state allowed, um, provided a little bit of a tweak in the kind of thing, goals you can make. But these are the more traditional ones, um, and these are what you gather data on. So it gives you kind of perspective pre-COVID and then COVID. Then you get to kind of see, um, you know, portrait of a graduate, this was developed with a, um, two boards ago and continues to evolve. Through now. And then you, uh, as you scroll down, you get a sense of how now the flexibilities. From the state, uh, changes some of the goal process. And I presented that, I think, I'm trying to think back in October to the board, so these have been prevent, presented to the board before in October and December. And this is a culmination of that now, to the point where it's ready, you, you know, you have the information of the past. Now, we're gonna set the goals for the future. And so this is available, if you want to check it out, but you can see, you know, what the Common Core teaching, this is actually available on, online. And as well for anybody who's searching, you can find the stuff, um, and tries to highlight it here, but then you can find it on the internet if you search for. For those things. So that's in it a nutshell, and you can saw, you can find the state of Connecticut Flexibilities Evaluation Plan, everything that I list here, you can find online. You can also find it in the, uh, in the agendas and the links, so. And that's about it, so keep those dates in your calendars for the board's goal setting.
Tony?
So how do these dates relate, or, so when the district then does their?
Prior to us.
So we're, the board was.
So the way we tried to set it up this time is that the board's doing these goals. Then we go as the admin into an admin retreat and then we work on our goal, so the way that I. Tried to set that up is you're doing yours at the end of a year, just before we then take, run the ball down, as you'll so to speak.
So then at the end of that, so the end of the, the entire goal process. Do we then come back and present those here?
Yeah, you're going to, ye- yes, but you also put them on every agenda, so, yes.
I, I'm interested in seeing, because like I said, this year's a little bit different than some of the previous years. In that the board has set its goals, if I'm understanding, the board has set its goals to the district, will then set their goals based on that. And, and I'm interested in seeing the whole continuum, you know, at that point.
Yes, the thing is that, um, to show you again, the, the continuum is more or less defined, you know, in this document. So it's here, but what, what is set for goals with, um, teachers saying, like, is somewhat dictated and structured. By the state and the evaluation plans, right? So, yes, and then, you know, goals though get pretty granular. So teacher goals and, you know, admin goals relate, but they're very grand. So, yeah, you know, the short answer is yes, that's how that works, but you may not, for instance, if you look at a standard Board of Ed goal right now, your. Your goals are traditionally broad.
Well, I would expect that, which, which completely understand what you're saying as far as, uh, the state. Dictating a lot of the, the stuff on the administrative level at school, but I would expect that as the board puts together the goals. Is such a, you know, for the board and for the, the district committee, that that somehow would influence.
Well, for instance, the board's, uh, implementation of the portrait of a graduate, right? That happens and that is, you know, so we dedicated energy a lot, which you'll find out about as I present some of the stuff. In the next couple of weeks even, you'll see the energy and the amount of time that we put into the portrait of a graduate. So that exists as a board goal and, and then we execute and continue to work on it.
And that makes sense, but classically, those goals were developed before the board set its goals. And so I'm intrigued to see now, when we flip that around, when you get the umbrella goal set, how that actually evolves as it goes down. And so I just wanna make sure that we're, we're gonna get a chance to really discuss that, I think, all really together, doing it this way instead of.
Yeah, and what's talked about for you is that the continuum of a board crosses over in November threshold. So what you're saying is always true and untrue at the same time in that. There are board members who were there that created the ones that were there, and there are new board members who came on who do not share necessarily the same perspective about the goals. And so when you hit November, let's say this works nicely, but then when you hit November, let's, you know, I don't know when that. When the next November is for turnover, your goal setting would start. Your goal setting would start May, June, say like this.
This year.
Yes, you're just, take this as an example, because I'm giving you the most direct, or the most comprehensive answer to that. May, June, July, you said, then we do our stuff. And then in November, like of some year, let's say, let's imagine July is always what we do. Then in November, if the board turns over, let's, some of those board members may go, that's not what I think we should focus on. And it's not until, so they, you carry those goals to the end of that year, and then at the end of that, May, June, July, that new board has an opportunity to do that.
And.
So it's always like half and half.
But in this case, we don't have an election in November, we're, we're in between. So this is the time when the goals that the board sets and the goals that the district set will have the same board. And that's what I'm trying to say, because like we've, we've had this conversation before, whether it's really how the board's goals reflect the, the schools operate, that there's a line, there's a connection, like you said, granularity. So here's our chance to look at it from a holistic perspective next year. Absolutely, right, who knows what the election could do at that point, so you have that type of position. I think we've got a chance here, and I just want to make sure that, you know, we, we earmark as we lay out our schedule and then your schedule, that we make sure we stick a pin here to look at the whole conversation.
And Tony, if I may ask, is your intention just to look at the development of the umbrella goals trickling down into the district? Or do you want to have a conversation about how they relate to one another? Is it just an observational motivation? Because that's what I'm understanding you're saying, you just like to observe just to see how that process plays out.
Because I don't, in no way, that's great. In no way am I saying at that point, we then turn back around and say, that's, that's right.
Yeah.
No, what I'm saying is, yes, there, there's a continuity that should exist from a theoretical perspective. And like Dr. Willard saying, we, we have no election here, we're coming out of, fingers crossed, you know, the COVID turning the world on its head. So we've got a chance to really look at it and spend some time again saying, did this work the way it should? What do we want to do the next? I just want to make sure that we've got a point in there that we focus to say, let's talk.
And to some extent, that's what you're doing. You're gonna say, hey, how well did this work out? Do you want to keep this, we want to change it, you know, and if you use thought exchange methodology, which is what I've used with people in the past, you know, we'll use whatever, you know, usually brainstorm, then you take and rank that brainstorming, then you narrow that down with another ranking, and it, it right, what your main priorities are, rise to the top. So if I was doing that, I would bring you through like a three to four stage process where you just throw it out, you throw everything against the wall, then you, you rank those, and you throw another layer, you know, next level against the wall, then the pearl of extrapolation, then another, and ultimately narrow it down to about four or five, because yours don't, you know, you just don't typically read like section seven dash eight, four, five of, you know, the board goals. Usually it's something like four. And they're usually, but yeah, you look at it, how well did that work, if you like it. We are chest deep in portrait of a graduate, so I'm keeping that as your board goal, the district, you know, this for something.
Right, and that's really another point, if we're touched, if we're chest deep, we really need to hear more about what's up for chest.
Yeah, yeah, well, then that's, that, so, for instance, for, because of COVID, you probably would have heard a lot more about that. And you're going to, as, as I do sort of the end of year stuff, I'm going to talk to you about all of that.
And that's really my point of, that's, that's really my point going through is, we're coming, fingers crossed, again, we're coming out of COVID. We've got an opportunity due to the elections to really get granular, to bring these conversations that you're talking about into the correct places, to have an assessment of how the overall goal, understand our overall goal making process, how it worked, how, to look at the whole thing. Here's our chance, and it's only by making sure that we have that talk now and say, this is what we want to do, that we're sure we get it done. Otherwise, we're going to end up a year from now on what we should have done.
Yeah, I mean, and to look at the scope of this year, the board, this board got about three presentations. It's got one in October, kind of highlighted everything, goals, and, and talked about flexibilities, and you proved that flexibilities. Then in December, you got this document that had everything, that had all the goals and the sub-goals and all that, and now you're getting this one now in April, and you're heading towards.
But what I think we're doing, it doesn't feel like we're saying, I understand and got the process for our goals of the board, and you're right, we've had these, we've do the presentations, I think really well. I'm interested in expanding that to the whole, including the, the district goals.
Seeing the connection between the two.
Yeah, the whole thing. Yeah, when you're, which we have. So she knew that you have pulled it back in, that you, if you said should. Well, as they, your pump is prime, and you're ready to go. I could provide more documentation if you'd like, there's already five sections. There's already some extensive things to review, and then from there, yeah, I'm forward to seeing what the goals, you know, of the board are, is, and I know what's in the district. But, yeah, I mean, goals, district, but, and, and again, some of that is guided by many years of practice. Like the portrait of a graduate is a multi-board activity.
I would actually just like to ask that we revisit Portrait of a Graduate, because I'm going to assume Jaden and Jen aren't even familiar with it. I don't know, but I'm thinking we really need to do that before our first goal setting meeting. So that would really be something that needs to be on the agenda, either April or May.
You will in a way, because I'm talking about that in my home.
Okay.
Part of my artifacts.
Okay, but like, like the specifics, like I think it is like.
You'll get a lot of documents.
Okay.
And then we can do a presentation on it as well, but you'll have a very good idea of kind of where that is.
Um, I just had a general question also, these dates, did we do a Google Doc for these dates, or were these dates just given?
They were the availability of Nick, and these are board meetings.
No, they're not, I just look, they're all on Tuesdays.
Yeah, they are.
Yes, so they're, they're the day before a board meeting. No, not, no, no, no. I'm all for like perhaps separating one of them maybe, but I think it would be very, actually, June twenty-eighth, I believe, is not a board meeting. I believe the board meeting is the week before.
Maybe those are the wrong lines.
I just, I, I think it might just be difficult to have like May twenty-fourth and then May twenty-fifth back to back.
Totally.
I know you are.
I know I'll be in Florida that week, so.
And I'm like, the last weekend of July, I mean, honestly, we canceled the first July meeting, but now we're putting two in one week at the end of July. I know you're going to say that's fun too, but that's the week, I'm not sure I'm going to be there, so I'd really hate to miss two meetings, much less one.
No, I know, Dr. Willard had said that he was going to have Nick come to our meeting, so I'm sure that, yeah, maybe they're just not.
That was not tension, and I'm sure it was perhaps a typographical error.
Yeah, probably, because that.
That's fine, so just something to note, and my only comment then on our old goals, if you will, is, and this is in general, we could talk about this during the first goal session, I would like to see some goals. I don't feel like a lot of our old goals were measurable, attainable, like we, you couldn't really put up, how do we know whether we're doing it or not? Like, I felt like there was really no way to really measure that, and I think, what could is a goal if you can't measure it. So that would be my only suggestion, when we have that first goal setting meeting, is to let's put goals that we can actually do.
And part of that is, your goals, the ones that have the real, you know, like SMARTboard type stuff, are the goals under. You set the kind of direction about sort of things, but then the goals underneath are usually the ones with the hard, the hard data targets of SMART.
Okay, so maybe that's what we need to look at a little bit, that is the, the second layer.
In a, in a year that was a non-COVID year prior to flexibilities.
Okay.
What you, what we used to do, that's why I included this, and that, this is why there's some historical information here.
Okay, so this has like some old goals, if you will?
These are the traditional, what you're kind of talking about, right? And that was a big part of kind of pre-COVID S I Ps, as we call them. And I would come back and try to do a presentation, say in February, you know, where we are on stuff. We have a couple of new things now, like we have the data dashboard, which actually gives you a really good idea of where the district is on a lot of data points that never existed prior. But this, this was, this was replaced by flexibilities, and the state of Connecticut, to be very frank, is moving away from stuff like this and moving more towards what's defined in the flexibility document. In fact, they, they have extended flexibilities into this coming year, and that's what I posted on the dashboard. And they, they plan to rewrite their entire framework for twenty-twenty-three, for starting, you know, right now, the C C T is from twenty-seventeen. But the new rewritten framework for twenty-twenty-four resembles those flexibilities much more than it resembles what I, and so I included the traditional, so you could see what that was. And what would normally be, would be, I would do a presentation in February about where we were, and then I would give you something kind of, you know, at the end. But we, that flexibilities is a very different, and so there are things that we will achieve and that I will give you a presentation on to get to the end. But what I also tried to do here is, this thing is getting in my way all the time, I'm trying to navigate. That, just so I can get this down a little. Um, what I'm trying to do for the board now. So to give you, um, I'll, I'm gonna share the screen in a minute, it's. And I can't see it was here anymore, but basically, I'm just gonna do it for a second. If you go to superintendent page, and this is on every bulletin too, so if you don't want to do this, you can just go to the bulletin. But at the bottom, it's the data portal, and the data portal, this is kind of like what I would have done years ago where I would present to the board, but this gives you a rolling data, so this is going to be updated more frequently than that, and. And so this gives you kind of a, a rolling record, although it could let us see, but this is available, right? And you can kind of see where we are, not just on, you know, in the past, it would just be like, you know, some very limited one-shot deal kind of stuff. This gives you sort of the, where, you know, as I'm going, it's going to be where we were, and then all updated by the date, and then you'll see another update for, for May and June. And you can get a really good idea of where our percentages are going and how it's changing. And so math is actually showing a pretty good shift in the right direction. If you read the narrative, you know, you're not going to be able to read it here, but if you go online at, at home and you see it, you'll see that, you know, we, we had some, you know, things, and that's what was going on across the whole state, that, that, you know, we're, we're doing a very good job of moving that needle in the right direction. Now supervisor's doing a great job, math teachers doing a great job, and so you'll see these, these data points changing and shifting in the, in the favorable direction. So that's great, and then what I'll do is I'll publish this information in June, and there'll be an update to all of this. So in a way, this board will be getting much more information than we, we used to get in the past, it's just you're getting it a little differently. And, you know, you know, flexibilities probably will not give you that, the way that the old style of doing it would. So instead, I'll be putting it here, and you'll see kind of a running record for all the disciplines about how it's going. And that's available to the public, and so you just look at it and it's just, you know, it's probably, it's going to be probably even better. But the goal process is, is you'll see, and that's why I wanted you to start looking at that, because the board has to approve it. The flexibilities stuff is what the state is really doing, so we get the opportunity, I think, I have to go back, but to approve that again next year if you want to, but if you don't, we go back to our traditional plan, but we only go back for probably a year. Because by next year, it looks like they're going to just release the new one. So we have a lot of work on the teacher's side, we have to really revamp everything, and then come in two years to match the state's new plan. So I know that's kind of throwing a lot at you, but if you go back and read, just look at flexibilities again, look at that document I posted again, and you'll see the progression. You'll see what's different from how the old goals used to be done, to how the flexibilities are done. And then at the end of this year, I'll be talking about, you know, some of those data points, and that site will have really more of what people, I think, are used to seeing, like, where were we from a data point to a data point? That's what that's like.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll try to make it, um, no, so I didn't want to say, I do kind of agree with Christine, you know, when we go forward to create our goals, that it's useful to have some hard deadlines, but you know, points to the goals to shoot for, even if, you know, beneath goals are more specific. But we can talk more about that as we go along. And I just wanted to add that we'll be discussing the flexibilities in the next curriculum committee meeting, most likely agenda as, but we'll have a more in-depth discussion about that. And we'll pour back to the board detail.
I would encourage you guys to share your ideas with Mr. Crusoe when he's here.
You know what that is, that, that's the Tuesdays, it should be the last days, it shouldn't be our board meetings.
But to check on June twenty-eighth, because I think the board meeting is June twenty-second.
Yeah, I don't know why, that is really, those are, I'll figure out why. But the good news is we're April thirteenth, so by the next meeting or, you know, whatever, I'll be, so let's do this. That is what's happening, and those dates are going to be board.
Okay, so I'll just keep the board meetings on my calendar, be quiet.
That, these are going to be board meeting dates, but I, and that's what's happening, but it's going to be, so the twenty-fifth May board meeting date is both board.
That one might be tight, I, I'll agree with you on that one, might be tough. Yeah, we might have to, yeah. That's a valuable decision, and we might have, I'll give you that, I know, look at your, you're, you're ready, like, that's not a meeting.
Yes.
Yeah. The legal word for that would be by for keys. Okay, um, does anyone else have anything to say or talk about with regard to goal setting? After what, would you like to talk with us about the budget line update, C R F and E R, interesting?
All right, so the next item here is the, the budget, C R F and E R F update, these are very good news. Just, you know, I want to give out good news whenever we can, coronavirus relief fund, that request is completed, and as of this meeting, that transfer is done, so it should be reflected in there for that one sixteen, educational reserve fund is on the town council agenda, or was for last night. That, but I have every reason to believe that that was a foreword, because that is the arrangement. So the good news is that, you know, this is well along its way, and that is having desired result. And we are, we did employ it right away, as we said we would, so it's, um, it's, uh, it's good news, and it's great, and it's great partnership between town and board. So I'm just reporting out on, on where you are with that, and it's working as it should.
Wonderful, any discussion on that? You know, I'm gonna have a question, I forget what the piece was that's going into this for year twenty-two, it was for the remote educators, I'm going to throw out the number of like fifty-something thousand?
For the remote, one sixteen, nine sixty for the associated.
Oh, that was, okay, that was the total for the associates, had that actually hit?
It's.
Okay, so it's already.
At eighty-three is with that.
With that, okay, thank you. Any other discussion, this great news? Okay. We can move on to the capital budget discussion.
So just to queue up a bit, and, you know, I don't know how much of, what is it, prologue to give, and how much prologue, but prologue, many years ago, capital process was very, maybe age, pages, or that, maybe thirty, fifty thousand, there was a short span of time where we're sticking a hundred thousand. And in most recent age, you've seen the color-coded charts to become part of what we present. So in the distant past, you know, we didn't have any of those color-coded charts, it was a couple of pages, and there wasn't a lot asked, because there wasn't a lot. And in that distant past, because of that, we ended up with a nine-point-six-million-dollar rent, some of which ended up being some stored, but it was to to basically take care of a whole lot of things, not, didn't get taken care of. So after that, we kind of pledged to make sure that we had everything that we could possibly show out there, so that at least the town knew exactly what it was facing. And so that gave her to the color-coded charts and the website that many of you have some experience with, and if you don't, kind of queue that up too, just as a resource for people. And if you don't, um, kind of queue that up too, just as a resource for people that um now, I don't think everybody knows this is here. So if you if you want to see that all the capital requests that have been made and over time in particular, you can you can click on. Yeah. When I say C, you know, it's relative C, but uh you can see going back into the past, all the plans and how they changed over time. So really, there's kind of a running record of, well, you know, as you kind of follow the breadcrumbs, so to speak, what was and wasn't, you know. How it got moved or transferred around. So I built this page years ago for the purpose of making sure that um there was a historical reference for our cap uh for budget, uh for a capital budget. And we, at that time also, anything you see in here is also then listed in in detail here or should be. And sometimes it takes us a little while to catch up as things change or or morph. But if you find a project, you should be also be able to find the um, you know, the um, the disaggregation of that. So or the the, you know, the um invoice for that type of thing. So if you click on one, you can see the description generally where it fell when it was presented at that time. And then you you can actually, in some cases, even see, um, you know, we tried to provide pictures of the justification or the unit that we're talking about. So um, this was done uh to provide as much transparency and information about capital process as we possibly could. As well as a historical reference to what was and wasn't, um, you know, taken forward into the next year. And a color coded chart um of what the boards reflects was. And that has typically been as far as the board carries the ball down to the board. Then, in the, you know, as as has been generally the case, once that's transferred over to the town. The town then has complete authority, like whereas the board has complete authority, you know, under ten two twenty-two over your own budget. That money is not for the town or for its budget. So the manager gets to make calls about that, and then the council ultimately gets to make, you know, calls. So this, this is a lot of things we tried to build up, provide both historical and future information and then what had changed. But because of how, you know, things generally went, um, we we really just kind of handed it off and then town did what it did. But um, you know, uh, to the credit of leadership of of this um board and um to Christine and the way she was thinking about this too. And I know others of you on the board, I know this is the Academy, like the Academy Awards, you know, I would like to say everyone who's involved, but I'm just gonna throw a few names out there. Um, and and there's many more who was part of that. But point point is now to where we are today. You know, there's, there's reason to kind of look at this a little bit more in a process point of view for the board. And just have us in May or June kind of do a capital check in. Now, you know, we'll be able to just go back pretty much to the chart that we had presented for May and June, because that's kind of where we ended. Was, you know, we're beginning at the end there, and that's where we want to start talking, like, okay, something didn't get funded the way we wanted. We're gonna put this here and really advocate for it, or, you know, we changed our mind about that, let's just move that around. So in a May or June check in, if F F C can provide some direction on that, we'll start early moving it around. And that actually will speed up that process a little. But then it'll also dovetail with what Pete's reporting, because the facilities um director will come. And, you know, we may say, oh, you know, we really want to move that over there, and he might say, oh, no, I would not do that. And so that conversation, you know, will start to evolve in May or June. And then hopefully by August, we can have a a draft for the board that is close to being what we're gonna submit in October. Informed by that conversation that we've had in May, June, furthered in August, probably second meeting in August. And then the final draft, as you know, um, it needs to be handed in October, so we will present a final draft to the board in September. Uh, and that would have all tweaks and, you know, the changes and the things that we had made. It also give the board a chance to kind of say, you know, well, this didn't get funded for a couple of years, or we really want to advocate for this. Um, then, when we present it in October, everybody knows exactly what's in it, what's going. It's not like a conversation that happens, you know, that once or twice in that week or coming weeks, we kind of seen that coming. And then um in December, really coming back and saying, well, what did they do? Now, again, in the past, the habit hasn't been to come back and say, what did they do? Because there's very control over what was done. But um, but to, you know, the credit of the board, um, you know, it sounds like this board wants to shift more to an advocacy role. And if something wasn't selected, say, no, we asked for that, you didn't, you didn't put it in there, we want to know why. And that's kind of a new dynamic, you know, and so I think that makes sense. You revisit where, what they did in December, um, and then as we head into that, you know, that's advocacy at that point. That's December to January advocacy period, and the board can say, if we don't like what happened there, we want to advocate. So that really is the new shift, though, going back. Probably what we've been used to doing, but it's a it's a good shift, it's just not, the distant past, it was irrelevant. Now it may be more relevant, um, because we have more information than we ever did, you know. And so I think we're in a very good place to to be doing that process step.
Okay, so, thank you, Dr. Will and Christine. Have a comment, then a question. So my first comment is, I think that this looks overall good to me, but I think that once we vote on it. It's important that the B O E adopted plan gets to the council, to see it. I don't know if that's a discussion we need to have, chair, make sure it gets submitted to the town council chair, or Dr. Willitt wants to take that off. My concerns with the previous capital budget is I don't really know if it. Actually got to see it, because of that, I don't really know what we asked for. You know, with the operating budget is very quick, you know, they, he had a joint meeting, they they see everything. Thumbs down, but at least they know. Which I think needs to happen here. My question is, um, is F F C chair, do you think this is like a reasonable timeline?
I do, yes, Dr. Will and I did kind of go through this, though, um, the plan right now is um for Mr. Stavva to come to our May F F C meeting. So we can kind of start talking about this timeline, see if he's got anything that he's already got kind of in the works or that he's thinking about. So I think that's a good timeline. Um, and then the August and September kind of bumps everything up, I'd say, like one meeting compared to the way it used to be. Because I think that was part of our problem, and I think we did throw in a special meeting, because it was like that real crunch right before that October twentieth, when it was due to the town. And um, for me personally, the big thing was this December or January check in, because kind of from what I found out is kind of. Wait, kind of what you were saying too, is we submitted to the town, and Dr. Will, and I, you submitted to Lisa Hancock. She submits her idea on it to the town council in December. But from what I read, when I went back and read that December letter, I don't think she shows them what we submitted. I think she takes what we submit, does whatever she so desires, that I mean, I think that is in her purview. But I think, and then she submits it to the council, but what I found very odd for. Is that she submitted it to the council on December seventh. The council doesn't actually talk about this again until the public hearing in February. So I I had asked the council, do you, did you have your own meeting prior to the public meeting where you went through this? And they did not. So the council, basically, from my understanding, is they just are supposed to read what Lisa gives them in December. But they don't actually talk about it until mid-February. So I think that's where the disconnect was too, because when Lisa gives the council her proposed capital budget, she doesn't give it to the board. So that was one thing I think we're gonna try maybe for Lisa to also give us a copy of her revisions. So that's why I think the the fifth bullet point here was kind of the ad that I think is very important. Because then the board event won't be completely out of the loop and finding out in the um either the joint meeting or the um public hearing. Like, wait, whoa, wait, she changed everything, or a lot of it, we didn't even know. So I think, as long as we're all on the same page, I think this will be a much better timeline for us to follow. And as Dr. Willitt said, I think we are in a little bit of a better position now that they are actually considering funding a lot of the things that we've asked for. That where in the past, it sounds like, well, we basically ignored, you know, I.
Historically, you can kind of see uh with the history, what were, what happened, more or less, because you can go back over all the years. And the the thing to kind of also notice, we post, as soon as the board decides to move it forward, we do put it here. So this is a good, you know, for some of the people, anyone who really wants to go back, we do, as a board, for the public to know, it is always put up there. So that the world can see what you've asked for. But right that process. You're right, you're right, and what I'm saying, and 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 it may be good to bring people's attention to it. But that's, but this, you know, for people, that is, if you can see how it kind of evolved.
So I think this is a good timeline, and I uh lesson learned for me, and I apologize to the full board, I should have probably been myself as F F C chair, following up with this in December or January. But I think we moved into budget season, so I think the year before, it just, I think the capital budget just kind of during the COVID year. Sure, if anything happened that year, so I apologize. And now I also know that I will make sure that I'm on top of that in that December, January, to basically get what what um the town manager has submitted to the town council. If for some reason we don't actually get it ourselves, I know to look for it now, so I will be on top of that.
That's good.
That's really good, or perhaps make sure that um the town council gets to see what we decided on before it gets tweaked. Yeah, yeah, I wonder if we can.
Well, there's there's nothing, the chair can't send it.
Yeah, yeah, so I think we should, we should. Yeah, okay.
I think those two things have worked out really well, and we'll be able to follow up on it, but we're just, you know, sending it out.
Yeah, not knowing, I remember, you know, the year before, I was, what did we do with that? What happens to it, you know, and it kind of, it's like it just kind of vanished.
Yeah.
It was a better process. I think so too, thank you for everyone who worked on it. I definitely was not one of those people, so I can't, thank you. Um, anyone else have any discussion on the capital budget, its process? Okay. I looked up to be chatting to that, about that for one, it got resolved, and I didn't have a plan, and that's wonderful. Okay, we can go into the committee liaison reports. How about Jacob with curriculum?
Sure, well, curriculum is easy, because we don't have it. The, I don't know if I covered this said previously, but we moved the date, it wasn't working for anybody. So now it's on the fourth Wednesday of every month, at five thirty, I believe, so it'll be on twenty six, twenty seven. Also, the task force, the mental health task force did meet. We met with an organization called The Village, um, which is a nonprofit that does a lot of work, uh, especially with uh young people. We didn't make any decisions about whether kind of partner with them or anything, but we did um need to discuss things with them. And we're gonna present our uh youth centered uh recommendation to the council at the next meeting, so.
The next, next meeting is Monday?
For mental health, yeah.
Is it, that's also the same day that the council will be looking at the.
Yeah, do you know, am I remembering that right, Jaden? Yeah. Thought it was next Monday, but there was a cancellation in there, that is the last.
Right.
Meetings. Yeah.
Let's see, not as of right now, it's not showing in the agenda, I gotta see my. What would be the day? April eighteen, April eighteen, so that's next, that's Monday, I believe. Yeah.
Christine, how about F F C? We have not met, we met, we meet next week, okay. Tony?
Yes, policy met today. And we get, thank you, Jacob, for coming. One of the things that we've tried to do before in previous times is if the policy we're talking about overlaps with either the purview or maybe some of the actions of some of the other committees, is try to invite that committee chair in and, you know, give them to you. You know, F F C, we've done that, and Jacob attended today from a curriculum perspective. Uh, so I sincerely appreciate that as well. We, we had uh visitors, you haven't watched online, too, telling you, policy is taking. So we discussed fifty forty and fifty forty-one, which is our transportation, and then our uh policy on cameras. And videos for on the buses, combining those of that, that combined policy will get entered into the queue, it's ready for board. For free, we also looked at policy one eighty, one zero eight zero, which is our visitors, and updating that policy. Again, that one was largely bringing it up to speed with ship and inventory, so it is through fairly quickly, and is also ready for a deeper on the engine. We then, you know, again, getting back to our our normal process of having a couple of the compliance policies, and then one that's a little more meaty. We talked about a policy recommendation that was coming out of T A B, uh, about academic excellence. Threw with the conversations, exactly what I'd hoped as far as, you know, just getting ideas, thoughts out there. Ultimately, we decided that, you know, for the gain, the the amount of risk was just significantly too high for the game, that what we had was enough. So that, that policy recommendation pretty much is is done, it won't go. It was overall a a good meeting. The plus side is just due to how things have cancellations and schedules and stuff, we had another policy meeting in two weeks.
Wow.
Go ahead, mark it down, feel free.
Well, it looks good.
That is happy face. No, you're not making a board, I tell you that.
Thing to look forward to. How about um Birch Grove? I know Dana's not here, anybody, Dr. Will, any updates? General Birch Grove, general.
In general.
Yes, generally, did they meet?
Oh, um, they did have a special meeting, I think.
Okay.
Between ours and that, you know, but I don't have a report on it, I wasn't there.
Okay, maybe we can ask Dana next time she comes to listen. And negotiations, are are those off and going?
Well, we're trying real hard.
Okay.
But we did have some dates set for custodians, and then they lost three units or a person.
Oh.
So then we, they have to assign a new person, and that new person needs new dates, and then we go back and get new dates from the committee, and so. So we're, we're getting that banged down, but we're, we're still in the process of getting the dates, you know, and everything more, but I think we're almost there.
Okay, that sounds good. Um, and Jen isn't here for communications, but she did give us a communications update to read. I do have it, okay, you want to do it? I was gonna print it, I forgot. Okay, communications update. Communications committee met on Monday, uh, March twenty eighth, where we discussed unfunded mandates. Dr. Willitt provided a summary of current mandates as well as task board actions regarding concerns. We discussed a significant amount of time that is spent by staff on mandates and ways it might, ways in which we might take action to communicate with the state. Dr. Willitt will create a master list of some top priority mandates, as well as visual examples of impact to personnel time to be discussed in the next communication committee meeting. And now we have some updates and reminders from Jen from our parent teacher organization. Tepco is still selling spirit wear online, the Birch Grove Book Fair is scheduled for May thirteenth through the twentieth, so be on the lookout for volunteer signup. They are currently also planning a spring social with ice cream and basket giveaway, so stay tuned for more info and a volunteer signup for that as well. Students and staff were so grateful to have the book fair back at T I S last week, and they'd like to thank everyone who supported it. The TMS PTO is holding an in-store fundraiser at Jeff's Kettle Corn on April thirtieth, with thirty percent of the profits going towards PTO. EMS teacher appreciation is May second, and a lunch will be provided. If you would like to donate a dessert, please stay tuned to their Facebook page for an upcoming signup. May twelfth is TMS night at the Yard Goat, so if you're interested, please buy your tickets soon, as the event is almost all sold out. They would like to thank everyone who supported their very successful Monsees Chocolate Fund. The Talon High School, High School Booster Club senior banners and graduation lawn signs order due date has been extended to May thirteenth, with banner and sign pickup on May twenty-fifth, and completed banners due Monday, June twentieth. The annual Eagle Scramble has been scheduled for Sunday, September twenty-fifth at one PM at Tops. For Staff Appreciation Week, May second through sixth, they are holding a raffle basket event, where each THS staff member will receive tickets. They're looking for volunteers to donate baskets in any theme of your choosing by Friday, April twenty-ninth. If you're willing to donate, please contact shellymack96@gmail.com. Contact information for everything mentioned can all be found on the respective website and Facebook pages, but if you have any trouble finding it, please feel free to contact Jen Galichant to point you in the right direction. That was very detailed. Thank you, Jen. Thank you, Jen. Okay, so now we are to public participation. Oh, chairs persons, where I am now the chair. Let me know. That is, well, I would just like to say I'm excited for the break for next week and the warm weather, and I hope everybody has a lovely holiday this weekend. Well, we have the holiday, and I hope you all enjoy it. Okay, so now we have no board action, so I guess we have public participation. Anyone?
Do you have points?
No.
Nobody raise their hand.
Yes, nobody. We have none, so should we move on to points of information?
Make sure.
Make sure, yes. I wouldn't want to leave anyone out.
See any hands?
Okay, all right.
So points?
Points.
Figured out what that. You asked for Wednesdays, we were given Tuesdays.
So we don't, we don't know.
Just, just tentatively, tentatively, what I'm thinking is really happened there is, you're looking probably, you know, May twenty-fifth, June twenty-second, and July twenty-seventh is probably what we were talking.
Okay, keep it posted.
That's what happened.
That was really bad for you.
You know, so that's what.
Okay, so glad you solved the mystery. So for the points of information, we have a lot of budget meeting minutes on, on, on the agenda.
Those are just information.
Okay, those are just.
Town council, it's a tradition for us to have at all town councils.
Okay, yes, I, I have noticed those before.
You'll see them all in the back.
All right. Um, does any board member have anything they wish to say?
You know, we were talking.
Yeah, of course.
We were talking earlier, and we're looking at different processes and different things we want to look at. I wonder, you know, before the, the world turned up, and we used to use the future area down there to kind of track those ideas as they come out, and then we could see what we were talking about and see the things that we were wanting to look at, and visual reference. Right now, it seems like a real, a whole lot of really good ideas are popping up, and we're starting to, how we're tracking that. That might be another opportunity to return back, also to the public.
Good idea.
Start talking about our goals, and we can articulate, you know, what specifically that looks like in terms of meeting in terms of. But that stuff.
But I like, you know, the, like, Christina and Dr. Willitt were doing with the, with the capital budget process, you know, I think it behooves us to look even in the goal process and do some of those periodic, halfway through, look back at goals, and say, does it still make sense? Are they still viable, just like with the. A little bit of a self-check to make sure that we haven't lost focus.
Great, good ideas. Anyone else? Okay. Um, so yes, there's your future is, or, oh. I was going to say to fill that up. Yes, yes, and nothing under new business, so I guess we can entertain a motion to adjourn. Christine Griffin, motion to adjourn. Everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you so much.